Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in Council Chambers 1123, West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Graham, presiding, also President or City Council President Deborah Rule, Councillors Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howarth. Just noticed, we did have some fits and starts with the technical aspects of presenting this meeting. We believe everything is running, but we just had the single camera tonight. So if you see that it's not panning, we are running on a adjusted system. So thanks for staff, all the hard work you put into that, Melissa and IT. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility as the Presiding Officer, I'm to identify the law enforcement personnel serving as Sergeant of Arms for tonight's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Coon in the back of the room. If everyone will please stand, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed with our regular business, as reflected on the agenda, we have a brief community compost presentation, and I want to thank Council President, I mean, Councillor Pam Duquette for bringing this to our attention. And I'm excited to hear about it. I know there's some communities in Idaho that are pretty far along on this path, and I know there are many cities in the country that have a better solution for their organic waste through this program. So I'm excited to hear folks from, let's see, Resource Synergy come speak to us. So with that, please, those from Resource Synergy, come on up and give us a few minutes of what we're doing wrong and what the opportunities are.
Definitely not doing anything wrong. So, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for having me. My name is Eric Minkinson, and I'm the founder and president of a Spokane-based sustainability consultancy called Resource Synergy. And we're here tonight to talk trash. Now, we always talk about throwing stuff away, but very few of us ever think about where away actually is. And guess what? It's not that little bin in the corner over there. In fact, away for the city of Sandpoint and for all Bonner County is 170 miles away. The trash from Bonner County goes down to Adams County in Washington, where it's dumped in a mega landfill down there. And at the same time that this trash is going down there, which by the way, over a third of that trash is organic material, it's yard waste and it's food waste. And at the same time that a third of that trash is going down 170 miles, this community is buying back compost, buying back compost that's trucked 100 miles in the same direction from BarTech Composting to buy over here at Pondray Garden Center and other retailers around the community. And so really, the goal of this project is to change that paradigm. It's to keep that material local, generating jobs and nourishing soils right here in Sandpoint and in Bonner County. And this has been an endeavor, it's been a project that has been in discussion for about five years now. It was first started, at least in the current context, with Schweitzer's Sustainability Initiative back in 2000. They brought us in to do a waste audit. We did some dumpster diving, sorted through all of their waste, and found that a substantial portion of their waste, guess what, coming out of the lodge is food. And what we also found is that that is not unique to just Schweitzer. There's businesses throughout the community that are generating organic waste. But it really wasn't until, are we still sharing here?
I think we are. We are not sharing yet, so.
Okay. It wasn't until the Kootenai Tribe of Idaho secured a grant from the Inflation Reduction Act that really kicked this project into high gear. And so the current proposed program would be to site a composting facility at the Sandpoint Organic Agriculture Center. This is, as many of you know, the U of I extension off of Boyer Road. And many of us have driven by these barns on the way up to Schweitzer. It's right as you're coming down Boyer before you take a left onto Schweitzer Mountain Road, and wondered what's in those barns. Well, right now, there's not much. They're pretty much empty. But the plan will be to site composting with inside these barns to both control pests and odors, and also at the same time, create that nutrient-rich soil amendment compost for the use on the grounds there at the Sandpoint Organic Agriculture Center, but also ultimately, and hopefully for sale to the local community. So this is what the system will look like. The main system is enclosed in a 20-foot shipping container. Food waste and yard waste goes in one end. A auger mixes the material together over the course of about two to three weeks, and compost comes out the other end. Now, this compost that comes out the other end is hot, it's very active, and so it goes into a secondary process in the second barn. So you remember from that satellite shot, there's two barns, one in front of the other. This back barn has six different bays. Three of those bays will be where the compost is cured. And so that's the compost calming down, getting ready to go on soil, onto plants. And so the plan is to expand the collection beyond just Schweitzer's food waste. Now, Schweitzer will be the first food waste source for this facility, but it's going to take more than that to feed the facility, and more than just food waste. But with food waste, the goal is to collect food waste from other local businesses, to provide these businesses with these green plastic carts. You'll have to excuse my amateur graphic design here in representation, but to roll out with this flatbed trailer with empty carts, swap them for full carts at local businesses, and bring that food waste back to be composted there at SOAC. And so you may be wondering, who is paying for this project? Well, you don't have to worry, I didn't come here tonight to ask for money. It's actually, the first phase of this project is fully funded. A majority of that funding came from that EPA SWIFER grant, Solid Waste Infrastructure and Recycling, part of the Federal Inflation Reduction Act. And that grant was actually received by the Kootenai Tribe, who turned around and purchased this equipment and is gifting that equipment to the University of Idaho for this project. It also received a generous donation from Altera Mountain Company, obviously, the recent purchaser-owner of Schweitzer. And then the University of Idaho is investing money in preparing the site to receive this composting system. So how can the city be involved? Well, we are looking for material. Specifically, we're looking for woody biomass. And so I understand there may be a pile of sticks and branches somewhere. Well, if that's ground, it can be brought down to this facility and composted. And that woody biomass presents a really good medium to break down that food waste that's coming in off of the restaurants. But we can also use other carbon sources, you know, wood chips, sawdust, even ground-up paper and cardboard. And at some point in the future, maybe even landscaping debris, not just from the city parks, but at some point, maybe even from residences. And so this really opens up an opportunity to close that cycle of organic material here in Sandpoint, to create a virtuous cycle where local organic material is nourishing local soil. And ultimately, the city could be purchasing that compost back for the use on landscaping along roads and in city parks. And you wouldn't have to go outside of the community and, you know, pay $70 to $90 a yard for compost to be trucked up 100 miles from BarTech when it's generated right here in our own backyards. So I promised to keep the presentation short, but here is the contact information for my team, at Resource Synergy, the contact information for SOAC and the Kootenai Tribe of Idaho. So with that, what questions do you have?
Thank you so much, Eric. That is really exciting. It sounds like a win-win. I have a couple questions, and the council might have a couple. First of all, I presume the model is voluntary, voluntary-based, not an enforcement. We're not going to require people to do this, just if you want to, this will be available.
Absolutely. And initially, it would just be available to select businesses that are early adopters and commit to really working with the program. It's not something that's going to be broadly cast to the entire community out of the gate, and it's something that would be years and years away from even being available to the volume that would come from residential service.
Gotcha. And my next question, final question, is I'm familiar with very successful programs like in Portland, Maine, where it's available to all residents and restaurants. Not putting the cart before the horse, but do you see a pathway where this could potentially result in a volunteer program that could be citywide?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. This is just the first of many steps. And one example of that is, you see, we're only using three bays in this back barn. These other three bays, so that, these are the three that we're using for the curing of the compost. These other three bays could be an additional active composting system. So we have the compost that's happening in the shipping container over here, probably the food waste. There could also be a yard waste, a three-bay yard waste composting system over here. Now, this is something that, you know, I have to clarify, SOAC is not ready to take that on out of the gate. You know, we're going to walk before we run here. But there is at least some space reserved in this system for additional yard waste composting. And we have talked to other sites as well, which could accommodate a much larger volume of material. Because at the end of the day, SOAC is a teaching institution. They're not an industrial processor. And there are some other sites in the county that might be a better suit for full-scale industrial processing.
Right. Council members, any questions for Eric and Alex?
If it ever comes to our restaurant, I'll have questions, but.
Okay.
It may.
That's what I was thinking of you two.
Yep.
Mostly with this. I don't have questions because I got to go out there. He invited Maeve, and Jason wasn't available, but Maeve and I went out and toured what they're looking at and listened to what they're doing. And I think it's so exciting for the community eventually to be able to use that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Eric, thank you for your presentation. But I'm not a composter today, so very interested in everything that you have presented. Can you maybe lay out what are the next steps and what are the timelines to put this plan into action?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we actually just ordered the shipping container equipment about two weeks ago. There's about a six-month lead time on that. And so that is our longest pull in the tent right now. And so over the next six months, we will be building out the site, pouring a pad for the shipping container to sit on, running electrical out from Boyer Road, water out to the site, and making those preparations for that system to land this fall. We'll also be purchasing a screener. Actually, it may have been purchased today. There were a number of emails that were going around about it today, and other equipment, you know, the carts and the trailer and things like that. But the plan is to be up and going this fall.
And who are you going to target for your initial waste? We heard Schweitzer, but beyond Schweitzer, who else?
These guys.
Just run towards.
Yep.
And then my third question is just, again, one of ignorance on my part. I mean, can you compost when the temperatures outside go below freezing? Does the system still works?
Absolutely. So the process generates its own heat. The microbes put off a lot of heat, and being contained both within a shipping container and then that shipping container within the building, it really allows this system to function year-round. And even the loading of the system is aided by the fact that they're not pulling those carts through the snow.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Eric, thanks for coming tonight. I appreciate it. I too am not much of a composter, and thank you, Councillor Duquette, for bringing this to our attention. A couple of questions here. I was looking, the grant was from the Inflation Reduction Act, is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, so I was kind of wondering why. So I was just looking through here, and they said it has, composting has got great job creation potential, can provide twice as many jobs as landfills, and four times more than incinerators. With that said, how many people do you have that you're expecting to be working on this, working in our area? Are there wages paid through the grant? And do you expect when your grant cycle runs out, you may have a model that creates jobs in the area?
Absolutely. So the goal is for this to be self-sustaining. The initial upfront capital and the two, in the first two years of wages are paid by the grant. Those wages are going to be University of Idaho employees. And so the grant funds are subsidizing the University of Idaho to add an employee out here at the SOAC to oversee this system and the process. Now, after that, the goal is to be selling enough compost at a high enough price that they can sustain that labor going forward. But at the end of the day, they're also buying compost right now off the open market. And so it will also be offsetting what is today an expense for the University of Idaho.
Now, do you, I know we're early on too, but what is the average cost of compost? You said somewhere between like $70 to $90 per yard?
Yeah. So earlier today, I jumped on Pondray Garden Center's website. It's about $71 per yard for Cedar Grove, or not Cedar Grove, BarTech compost. And they have a premium compost that's about $95 a yard. You know, with this material, we would be targeting that premium compost category because the food waste that it contains is going to be very nitrogen-rich. It's going to be very active for plants. It's going to provide them a lot of nutrients. And so we anticipate we'll be able to hit on the higher end of that market. And once it's either put into bags or buckets, it's worth about 10 times the amount that it is in bulk. And so the ultimate goal, if you've ever had Cougar Gold cheese, you know how much of a following the Washington State University has with Cougar Gold? Yes, the equivalent is to have some sort of vandal compost, a branded premium compost sold in retail.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to help when you need to get, when you're ready to get situated.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thanks so much. Really appreciate your time. Very informative, exciting work. All right, moving on. We'll make some general announcements before we proceed. First, I will. Oh, no, we're done with that. Sorry. So just moving on to general announcements, I'll start mayor announcements, a few updates for council and for the public. I've heard that, you know, some members of the public want more information about all that's going on. So just going to cover a couple department-by-department items. On the police department, we've got two new hires. Congratulations to Corey. Ben and Heidi will be starting and going down to the Idaho Post for training for, I believe, like 14 weeks, and then they'll be coming back and doing some training for an almost equivalent amount of time here. So we are excited to add two new members to our police force. And also Captain Bailey will be retiring. We do have a, after, I believe, 36 years. We do have a little open house for him, June 16th, here in the council chambers from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and thank Captain Bailey for his long service with the city. We have had some incidents throughout the city, as is typical violence and just vandalism of our public facilities. Yesterday, Urban Renewal did approve the funding of two of our smart cameras down at the city parking lot, which are now going to be purchased and installed. Those are some of the cameras that helped us find the arsonist last year and are very capable. We're also going to be installing some at City Beach, not the high-tech ones, but at least something. So when there is an act of vandalism, we can at least have some paths. And at Memorial Field, we've had that bathroom attacked and destroyed numerous times. So that's what's going on. The police department, fire. You're not aware of this, council, and the public's not, but the chief has been working on an emergency response plan for the city, primarily for the departments and myself. I might have mentioned that when I became mayor, I was expecting some kind of three-ring binder that would provide a response to any kind of incident. Doesn't exist. So we've been working hard over the last eight months on putting that together. It will be prepared and implemented by July 4th, and it will have contingency planning, responses, reunification for all conceived disasters, incidents from plane crashes to train derailments to truck crashes to anything you can think of. I'm really excited about that. We've got radios so we can communicate if the cell phones go down. We've got a prepositioned trailer now that has barricades. We've been coordinating with Public Works and Streets to know how we're going to deploy those in the event of any given incident. So that's kind of what's going on in the fire department, as well as just general fire responses. Central Services, council, you'll be receiving shortly an update on a compensation classification study, which interviewed all positions within the city. The goal of that is to ensure internal and regional labor market equity across all employees and job classifications. It is going to be unique to Sandpoint. There are numerous factors that take into account very real empirical data related to housing and other cost of living in Sandpoint. And that will result in a budget, when the budget comes to you, implementation of that. It's been shared with directors at this point. We've got some good feedback and making some fine adjustments to it, and then it will be deployed to department heads, I mean supervisors. Again, you'll be getting a briefing on that very shortly. There are numerous leases in the works with Central Services, including the Bonner County Historical Society. Feel free, if you've been reached out or contacted by any of those entities that we're writing some new leases for, happy to provide you some background. We are about to implement global positioning satellite devices in all city vehicles. This stems from a citizen concern I received last year about vehicles outside the city. So this will enable us to know where our vehicles are. The intent is not to be, you know, a Snoopy watchdog just to both provide liability. If there's an issue, we can defend that we had a vehicle, yes or no in the incident, or no, if there's a vehicle outside of city limits, why it's outside of city limits. In addition, Central Services, we're working on some workplace policy amendments. So those primarily have to do with hours of work and duties, pretty generic stuff. On finance, we are working through the budget and per Idaho code, and it's been historically practiced. I will be bringing the council a balanced budget for your consideration support. That will be here before you know it. So I'm trying to get together with all of you individually to make sure if you have any areas of special interest or issues you want addressed and funded in the budget, we will try our best to make that happen. Also, finance, thanks to the great work and some of the presentation by Director Welker last week at the Russell Center. I'll be bringing an ordinance to council, which will seek to redirect revenue from parks, from their capital improvement fund to the general fund. Right now, we're spending about a million dollars from the general fund to support our park system. As was made clear last week, all of the revenue derived from those park facilities go into the park capital improvement fund. So I'm going to bring in ordinance that hopes to redirect the majority of those revenues back into the general fund, so we can do our best to support the services funded by the general fund. Community planning development, just briefly, we have Director Welker's compiling the feedback from the survey. We've got some great feedback, some great community participation last week. And we're still waiting to hear from the USTA and the specifics on their management of the facility and what that proposal actually looks like. Once we get that, Director Welker will be bringing that before council, and we'll be seeking council feedback and direction at that time that we will implement for the management, potential conversion or status quo of the Russell Center facility. Planning, community planning development, also working on our impact fees. We are moving the draft fees to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee at their next meeting, and then that will shortly be coming to the city council for your consideration and feedback. And the main sticky point right now is the road or transportation capital improvement element of that, which is a big component of those fees. Overall, you'll hear an update from Director Welker on the building activity. Generally, what I hear talking to our building inspectors, there's a marked slowdown on construction activity. Again, Jason will fill us in on some of that shortly. He's also going to be bringing us our parking policy, June 18th. And if supported by the council, we will then proceed with the specifics of equipment and a management plan for where those parking fees will be implemented and potential installation of parking meters. We are excitedly awaiting a grant decision on the beach parking lot refurb and the RV Park refurbishment. We expect that, to hear back on that on June 11th. And if approved, we will incorporate that into the budget, and that's an exciting opportunity. On the hotel, we are waiting for the applicants to refine their design, which will be brought back to the planning department for consideration. They apparently are looking at potentially a fall construction activity period demolition. So it appears at this point that the hotel will be available throughout the summer, which is great for our local option tax, because that generates lion's share of our local option tax, our lodging tax. And then two more quick things from planning. The area of impact will be considered at Bonner County at 11:00 AM on June 16th, along with all the other cities. I don't expect a lot of fireworks, but we will have representation there to advocate for that piece next to east of Chucks Lou that we would like to see in the city's ACI. And then finally, pretty exciting, we will be bringing on and onboarding Eric Brubaker, our new associate planner. Eric has, if you don't know him, was the former planning director out in Pondray. He's got a long history in the community, understands the community very well. And I'm excited, because this will give our planning department the capacity to tackle our long-range planning issues, zoning code amendments that will comply with our newly adopted comp plan. So for the first time since, I believe, 2015, we will have enough planning horsepower to both address current planning and long-range planning. So we will get rolling on all of that. Moving on to Public Works, we've got a variety of projects in the works, including the completion of the lift stations, most notably down at City Beach. As many of you are aware, the Chafe 150 is going to take place next Saturday. And the timing of that is pretty tight. There's a big cut down there, if you're not aware, a bunch of gravel, and Holly and her team are working hard with some contractors to make sure that is hard-surfaced with asphalt before the chafe kicks off on Saturday. We've got the Ruth Sewer line wrapping up. You'll see some work out there on Boyer today, trying to get that paved Thursday morning. That will complete all the activity on Boyer for now. So just ask for public, just give us some grace. It is going to be a little bit of a traffic delay Thursday morning out there as they pave that ripped-up section of Boyer. We do have a number of other street projects that are ramping up, including sidewalks on Fourth Ave. We're going to be doing a Pine Street grind mill and overlay, same on Division. And then, of course, Cedar, as you're familiar with, we are going to be working on the water line installation this year, what we're now calling Phase One of Two, so we can get back to you on the design for the tree saving and the alignment of that. And finally, Phase Three of Downtown Revitalization, that RFP is. And finally, Phase Three of Downtown Revitalization, that RFP is being put together for release. On the water side, you're aware that I'm working with legal counsel down in Boise, specifically on our future service areas and any constraints or opportunities to enter into a revised intergovernmental agreement with the city of Ponderay, Kootenay, and Bonner County. We had an update today with our legal team, and we are almost at a point where we have a very firm legal analysis of where we stand in terms of our ability to serve, not serve, and what our rights are, legal rights are there for, moving forward. So that ball is rolling forward quickly. On the sewer, just kind of a final couple of things. We do have our preliminary engineering report from Keller and Associates. That is under peer review right now with StanTech. They are looking at that preliminary engineering report. And pending the peer review, we will bring that to the city council in the next month or so for review. And then concurrently, we've had an active two weeks with bond council, media, and fiduciary and underwriters for a bond election this fall. That will be most likely for $130 million. That will be asking the voters to support that indebtedness so we can proceed with design and construction replacement of the sewer plant. Related, we will be bringing a contract for a new screw press to council shortly. That is a sole-source item. We had a pilot program here over the course of the winter, and the screw press is the preferred equipment. That will be, again, coming to council, and it is part of our plan for the overall replacement of the sewer plant. So we're not adding redundant equipment that's going to be, you know, ripped out. This is concurrent with our improvements there. Great Northern, I had mentioned, we didn't get the Chrissy Grant for those railroad crossings. We are working to salvage some stormwater engineering out of that preliminary engineering on Great Northern. We're looking at about a million and a half dollars that we're going to try to ask Urban Renewal to fund for stormwater improvements on the west side of the airport. And just a couple quick last ones. I'm getting a lot of traffic concerns about backup on Pine and Fifth. I talked to the police chief and Holly today. We believe that's related to the school release around 2:00, 2:15 in the afternoon. So school ends Friday, as many of you are aware. We'll see if that relieves it. It is a busy time of the year, and we have asked ITD to adjust that signal timing on Fifth and Cedar so we can better coordinate those backups there and reduce them as best as possible. On the legislative front, real quickly, as I mentioned, I'm part of this CR 103 interim committee for the House and Senate. We did have our first meeting three weeks ago down in Boise. We have another one on June 27th in Idaho Falls. Then we're hosting one here, 8/14, August 14th, here in this room all day. And then the final one will be September 26th in Boise. And I'm just excited because there's a lot of great discussion about how affordable housing can be achieved without direct government management or engagement. So I'm hopeful we're going to have some great solutions across the state on that. Two last things, one last thing. We do have, due to the area of city impact, now the area of impact changing, one of our planning and zoning commissioners will no longer be in that after June 16th. So we will be posting an opening for a position on our planning and zoning commission. So I encourage the public or council members, if you have or know of people who are skilled and interested in that position, we would love to have some good candidates. And with that, I would turn it over to council for any questions of my report or council announcements and reports.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick questions here. June 18th, you said the parking plan was coming to us? Is that coming to us as an action item or for review for more input?
It will be an action item for the policy. And then just keep in mind, we're separating the policy, which doesn't really do anything. Then we'll have an actual management plan that will quick follow. And the thinking is, I don't want to spend a bunch of time on a management plan if you're not going to adopt the policy. So policy and then the action plan, which will really go into the detail of the technology and the locations of where the parking will, paid parking will be implemented.
Okay, great, thank you. Second question, do we have any idea with the refined design of the hotel if it's going to need to go back through planning and zoning?
We don't, we won't know that until they actually submit their refinement. And then that's this unique aspect where generally it is a determination, whether it's a diminut, de minimis or minor change. If it's a de minimis or minor change, then it could proceed. If it's determined to be a significant change, typically an expansion of an application, it would go back for planning commission hearing.
Okay. The screw.
And on that point, I've heard a number of people, the hotel has engaged the Salley Association. They do have aspirations someday to look at the Marina area. I just want to make it clear to the public and the council, I am not entertaining any privatization, any docs, nothing down there. This is a building permit for a hotel only, and I'm not going there. So please dispel any rumors that may be out there that I'm planning on privatizing or supporting the privatization of our city beach.
One last question, the screw press, that will be coming to us before our July 9th budget meeting? Is that, and so I guess my question is, have we already budgeted for the screw press since we were doing the pilot program, or is this going to be in addition?
It will either be out of this year's existing budget, or it will be carried over to the next year's budget. It's, it looks like it's going to be this year's budget. It just depends on the timing. We're working, because it's a sole-source piece of equipment, it makes the solicitation a little more technical and complex. So we're going to have to go back and do that sole-source solicitation. And it's coming out of the utility fund, as you're probably aware. So it's either going to be this year's budget, or we'll include it in next year's budget. We don't know exactly right now on the timing.
Okay, and then lastly, may I remove the proposed resolution for the watershed license agreement amendment number three, the renewal with the Ponderay Peddlers from the consent calendar?
You may, and when we get to that, I will put you first up for doing that.
Thank you.
Councilman Dick, any other council announcements or reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
I do have an update from our Urban Forestry Commission. We had our regularly scheduled meeting on May 22nd, where we continued our discussion on the definition of heritage and other valuable trees. In our city code, it specifies that heritage tree designation will be done in coordination with the Arts and Historical Press Committee. So the commission indicated a desire to include that committee in the discussion about defining heritage trees and also solicit suggestions from them as to trees around our community that might fit that description, to start compiling a list. Staff gave an update on the planned Arbor Day celebration. There is some discussion about a potential project for planting trees along the Sandpoint Dover Bike Path. Very sunny and loud, if anyone's been along there recently. We also continue the discussion about the update to the Arboretum, Arboretum Cultural Manual. And the commission requested that staff add mulch to all the trees in the down, the new newly paved downtown parking lot and temporary fencing around the newly planted trees to protect them just from, you know, corridors and whatnot. Also requested that staff address a previous public comment at, I believe it was our April Forestry Commission meeting, from a certified arborist who drew attention to improper planting of the new trees at Travers Park. I don't know if there's any traction on that, but it was a request that was brought up. And then in addition to that meeting, we also had our Arbor Day celebration on May 31st at Farman Park in the downtown parking lot. We had a booth set up at the farmer's market from 9:00 to 10:00, and we gave out 100 larch saplings. And at 10:00 o'clock, we moved over to the downtown parking lot for a tree planting demonstration and ceremony. I just wanted to give a big thanks to city forester Eric Bush, the Urban Forestry Commission, as well as Gwen Victorson from Idaho Departments of Land. She also serves in our Parks and Rec Commission, as well as the Spokane Conservation District, who donated the larch trees that we gave out.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. And I just want to follow up on the downtown parking lot, the mulch. You will, it's going to be a week or two, maybe more. But I have asked Director Welker to prioritize and, within his budget for parks maintenance, look at another temporary employee to retrofit all of our stormwater swales downtown. You know, it's a pretty low-level investment that I think will really make our town show the pride that we care about our public spaces. So if you see people working down there in the coming months, we are going to try to refresh those. They haven't been refreshed since their original installation, and they do serve a very specific function for filtering stormwater. So it's not just throwing mulch in there, it's making sure that they drain and filter appropriately. So you will see that activity, and we'll try to hit those protection areas in the new parking lot, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just on that subject, if we're looking to Memorial Field, the swales down there, and some of the new plantings could use a little extra look.
Yep.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'm just going to comment, people are trying to walk through that newly crassed area through there and making big footprints in there. I don't know if it's roped off at all yet.
This is in the parking lot, downtown parking lot?
Right.
I will.
I'm not sure why I think they have to cut through that, but.
I will mention that to, I'm sure Director Welker will hear that. Maybe you can talk to Austin and maybe throw some ribbon up around it or something.
And then I have Sustainability Committee.
Go for it.
May 27th, we met. We were going to work on continuing the discussion of the comprehensive plan chapters in relation to sustainability. The matrix has been spearheaded, however, by Katrina Pielie, and she was going to be late. And so we put that to the end of the meeting, and she wasn't able to make it. So we did not get back to that. But they did quite a few discussions on city projects, a proposed parking ordinance, upcoming projects within the city. They talked about the Free Tree Program used to have neighborhoods and talked about going to the planting. I had a lacrosse tournament all day in Spokane, I did not get to make it. We, you know, we had a big discussion on sustainability and how it kind of overlaps all the other committees and hoping somehow to do some sort of cross-meeting or communication at some point. So that was just discussed, and that was all for that, for that meeting. And no, no offense, but I sure appreciate hearing from them instead of you. But you just did.
You will, you will hear from them. I just, I just wanted you to know that every single thing that they say is coming out of my head and going through them, and they implement. So I just want you to recognize that. We've got a lot going on.
Obviously, if there's a lot going on, you wore me out.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it coming from you, goes a lot quicker, thanks.
Yep. Any other council announcements or reports? Excellent. I'll now yield the floor to staff for some quick reports.
Oh, we're still having.
Sure, you can actually ask them questions. That's your role, is to drill down and keep us all accountable.
I have no questions. It's just kind of a.
These are, these are.
Band you went through.
Holly, 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 so our public works director.
That's right, the mayor did a great job going over all of public works. I've just got a couple of updates. That Boyer patch, we are thrilled to have that patch on Boyer paved tomorrow. We're pivoting from the morning to the evening, so you'll see them out there until 8:00 PM tomorrow. So we'll miss that early school rush in the morning. So that was just one tweak from, from what the mayor presented. The only other update I have is over at City Beach at our lift station, we are going to be doing night work next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. You'll see signs up there for that lift station work so that we can do that last sewer mainline installation and paving next week. So again, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And that's all I have for updates.
Any questions for Holly?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, so the mayor mentioned the stoplight at Fifth and Pine. And it had been on my mind because I've seen a lot of backups there where the timing between the lights doesn't facilitate traffic very well. So if you are having discussions with ITD about re-timing those lights, I'd be interested in finding out more about re-timing all of the lights, or at least the Boyer, Pine, and Cedar lights, so that ideally, if you stopped at Boyer, you wouldn't even stop until larch or at all after that.
Absolutely, and that's our plan. When we installed the light, Pine and Fifth was operating on its own timing. And then ITD has been, they picked that signal up, it's now theirs, they own and operate it. We gave them a timing plan to implement, and they're updating that plan on real time with real numbers. I'm on the phone with them pretty frequently, asking for updates and really pushing them to try to get that new sequencing implemented. And they're, they're working on it, it's on their radar, and I hope to have an answer for that soon and have that new timing installed. So it's, we're working on it with ITD.
Perfect, thank you.
Just aside on that, a lot of people are using Pine Street now because of that. So it's really increased traffic on Pine. I just noticed when I ride my bike, it's a lot more. And I know it's because they back up at Boyer after backing up.
The intent was to encourage traffic use on Pine, as it's an art aerial, so.
Residential area with a park, just saying.
Any other questions for Holly? Thanks, Holly. Chief.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Uh, just one quick thing, on June 17th at 5:30 PM here at the fire station, we will be offering a hands-only CPR, or you may have heard of compression CPR. It is for ages 12 and up. The target audience is anybody, your parents, caregivers, teens, any community members. There's no charge for the class, there's no sign up. If you can make it, just swing by, be about 30 minutes to an hour. It does not give you a CPR certification, but it does help you practice the, you know, real life-saving knowledge that you can use.
What was the time again?
It starts at 5:30.
Yeah.
PM, yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief, safe, appreciate it. Jason Welker, community planning development director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to share my screen really quick with you, if I can find Zoom. Only have 100 tabs open. The mayor asked me to produce a little quarterly update on building permit applications pipeline in the development world. So I prepared a graph for you. I love graphs, you all have graphs. Okay, I'm going to test your graph-reading abilities here. We've got the last five years of building permit and building activity through quarters one and two, going back to 2021. So the notable shift here is that we are seeing only about 25% of the construction activity that we have over the last four years. That's the green line, so that's the number of dwelling units. This is residential dwelling units that have actually been issued building permits this year. Okay, the total number of building permits is obviously much larger. Keep in mind that those building permits include commercial, residential remodels, commercial remodels, new commercial construction, decks, porches, roof permits, all sorts of things have to be permitted at the city. But the somewhat surprising drop in the green line is kind of showing that perhaps the post-COVID building boom that we've seen here is starting to slow a little bit. Obviously, there's been an election, there's been the turnover of the administration. We've got higher interest rates than we have in the last five years, inflation uncertainty, tariffs. There's lots of possible explanations for this, we don't know what they are. It's a small sample size, we've got 10 units that have been permitted this year. But that's down from 40 at the same time last year, and, you know, as high as 45 just three years ago. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. Some other details that I found, thanks to Pete, our building official, and Krista, who assembled some data for us. Here's the breakdown of what we've issued so far this year. Three single-family homes have had new building permits issued, four ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and four multifamily dwelling units. That's not for multifamily buildings, but for units, for dwelling units, which seems pretty low, if you think of multifamily, sometimes they have, you know, 50, 100 units. pretty low if you think of multifamily, sometimes they have, you know, 50, 100 units. We've only issued permits for four dwelling units. In addition to that, we've seen 12 new commercial construction permits, a little bit more activity in the commercial realm, 10 commercial remodels, and then 94 other permits, which are all those smaller, you know, remodels for residential roof permits, decks, things like that. So we saw our peak over the last seven or eight years, our peak was, well, you can see it right there, our peak was in 22, 23. We are possibly seeing more of a normalization. Obviously, we haven't really had a normal period in the last 20 years because we went through the Great Recession where there was like no building activity at all. But we're perhaps getting back to more of a very long run, normal rate of, of development standpoint. The interesting thing is that we have a record number of dwelling units in the pipeline with a, a four or five year low in actual permits issued for construction. So the mayor's said it many times, we have something like a thousand dwelling units that are entitled in the pipeline.
1,064, I counted.
There you go. Coincidentally, the exact same as we have number of parking spaces downtown. That number's in my head right now. Okay. So what are we seeing though? I mean, obviously ADUs, infill style development, more remodels are, are being issued. So it's perhaps a suggestion that we are seeing perhaps a trend towards reinvestment in existing properties and infill development rather than some of that greenfield development we saw over the last three or four years. So just something to think about. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and move on to some other updates. The mayor did cover most of my updates tonight, but I, he didn't get into any details about some of the projects that are going on. So we have 11 days left in our contract with Gino. Yay. Can't wait to close that out. Final punch list items, we're going through some things like some, some issues with the fire detection system in the building. It's triggering a couple of times a day. We've got some issues with the door locks on the front of the building. So for some reason, there's a ghost unlocking our building after it closes at night. We're trying to understand what's going on with that. Thanks to the police chief who's pulled out some security camera footage for us. We're working with Gino in these last couple of weeks to make sure we have a solution for these little problems. Two weeks ago, you approved a contract extension, or sorry, not extension, but increase to allow for the pouring of a concrete pad for the picnic shelter. I, I, I wanted to get that approved in case before their contract ends on June 15th. We did need Gino to pour that pad. I, that, where we decided to pause the point of the pad until we have an exact solution for what picnic shelter we're going to put there. Today at lunch, Maeve and myself went to the Rotary Club meeting. Maeve did a fantastic job presenting the options that she's investigated and provided, produced quotes for, from $30,000 for like a prefabricated steel structure to about $90,000 for a fully custom timber frame structure. And man, the, the Rotarians were really excited to participate in that. And we, we immediately had local contractors, a roofing company come forward and say, by the end of the day, I can have 10 contractors ready to do this project for you. So we think we're going to have a really cool, like old fashioned barn raising with the Rotary Club here in the next couple of months. So we're going to hold off on doing the concrete work and we're going to go out to bid and find a, a concrete contractor. We also happen to have a, a, a concrete expert on our Parks team right now, Ted, who helped with the concrete lake park, skate park expansion last year is now a full time park employee. So we may just self perform that concrete work. The concrete work, the other concrete work you approved was done last week. Several pads were poured for park benches, which have since been installed. A cracked piece of concrete that was poured last year was replaced adjacent to the splash pad. And that playground's just been going off for the last couple of weeks with hundreds of kids a day out there playing on the splash pad. So it's been super exciting to see that. We, we did get the email from our concerned arborist citizen who had some concerns about the way trees are planted. We directed that to Mike Terrell, our landscape architect. He has final sign off on all landscaping at Travis Park. So any incorrectly planted trees have final inspection. And I'm actually not sure whether that final inspection has happened. I, I sent a text to Maeve, I haven't gotten a reply, so. But ultimately, the, the subcontractor in charge of landscaping at Travis Park has final say on whether trees are planted correctly or not. Any trees that aren't correctly planted, correctly planted will be removed and replaced. But from what I understand, I think he had already done his final inspection and confirmed that the trees were planted correctly. So I just wanted to, and I'll let you know when I get a confirmation of that, Councilman Schreiber. Thompson Fence is under contract to do the ball field safety nets. We're just waiting for their calendar free up time. We also think we're going to end up using them for the batting cages. We're, we're working with Little League to get the right batting cages. I think the direction we're going to go is to replace the old chain link ones that we have with something more like we have a memorial field. It's marginally more expensive, but it's what the baseball community wants. And my goal is to give that community what they want and what they need. So we're working with Parks Maintenance Crew. Sean Warren is a former baseball player. He's worked with Little League to make sure we get the right batting cages there. The final projects at Travis this year, I saw Adam Hall here from the Skate Park Association. We've been working with Rory from BCSA to identify the best location for a shade structure for the skate park. We want to do a shade structure. We want to finish the landscaping around the skate park. I surveyed Waldorf kids yesterday to see what their preferred solution on the east side of the skate park was. They all said grassy strip instead of an asphalt path. I think we're going to go in that direction. That's also what Rory from the Skate Park Association supports east of the skate park. We want to do a little kiosk with safety information and information about BCSA in the skate park. So those are going to be kind of our last projects at Travis this year. And that's, that's going to wrap up the capital improvement project for this year. We found, we find out a week from today about those city beach grants. So hopefully at our next meeting, I'll have a clear direction of whether we're going to be doing a $1.6 million upgrade to the RV campground and the city beach parking lot next year, or whether we'll have more of those parks CIP funds to identify other smaller parks projects we, we can focus on next year. So I think that's all I have. Can't wait for Eric Brubaker. Did you mention his name?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, Eric Brubaker, former planning director, a community and planning development director for Pond Ray is our new associate planner. He's going to start next week. Can't be more excited about that. I think a lot of you probably know him. He's lived here for over 20 years. So.
Any questions for Director Welker?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I had a skateboarder come up to me and they asked me, they went to go skateboard like at 8 o'clock and they said the lights weren't working. Is that normal if the lights are shut off?
The lights shut off at 10. Right now, you probably wouldn't need them at 8, but the lights go off at 10. Yeah, so.
Turn them on until 10.
As far as I know, they're working right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't heard, this is the first I've heard that they might not be working. I see them on quite often when I go home, but I can look into that. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Jason, I would just kind of want to echo those sentiments. You guys did a great job at Rotary. I was unable to attend, but I had several Rotarians call me by 2 o'clock that were eager and excited. And when Sandpoint Rotary Club gets excited about something, they mobilize and raise funds and get projects done. So excellent job. They had a lot of great things to say about you and Maeve in the presentation.
Great, appreciate that.
Other questions for Director Welker?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Other directors want to give a report? Don't feel obliged. Any other questions for other department heads? Council? Next, we'll proceed with the general public comment portion of the meeting. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a signup form, please do so and hand it to staff member at the back of the room. Purpose of the general comment time is to allow members of the public to, in attendance, to speak to the mayor and council regarding items included on this evening's agenda under the consent calendar or older new business that is not a hearing. For the purpose of a general public forum, you are also welcome to comment on any topic pertinent to the city business, not included on the agenda. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted just outside the chamber's entry doors. In summary, I ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs. Council cannot take testimony on any planning related matter outside of an official public hearing. This includes comments on the farm and flats development on Church Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission has already held a public hearing and has rendered a written decision regarding their site plan review. Currently, there is an appeal period pending where city council has the potential to possibly need to hear and render a decision on that matter. So no comment will be taken regarding any facet of pertaining to the application this evening. Also, though there are two hearings on tonight agendas, they are not public hearings. They are matters brought by an applicant for council review. No public testimony will be taken on those two items. Please note that public comment time is for comments only. No questions or debate. You're welcome to contact me during regular business hours. If you have any questions or concerns, this is the only general public comment time that will be offered this evening. Those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise their hand on Zoom at this time. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in the city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. And with that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the general public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Danielle Swarin.
Good evening, Danielle.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate all of you. My name's Danielle Swarin. I live in Bonner County, but not within the city of Sandpoint. I just wanted to chat with you all about the, it sounds like the termination of the partnership with the Skyhawk Sports Academy as the Parks and Rec Department was, I think, contracting with them to provide youth sports programs as young as 18 months. My 18 month old did their little soccer program, which was really awesome. And then my three year old was signed up for some of their programs in the summer. And then we got an email saying that that had been canceled and all the summer programs weren't going to be happening anymore. So I just wanted to mention that and just kind of, I guess, highlight how important these programs are, I think, for the community. I think especially it provides connection for parents and for families. It helps young kids, you know, improve their developmental skills and, you know, gives youth pro-social activities to be involved in as well. And I think if we want to keep young families here in Sandpoint, we've got to, you know, really focus on, on keeping those types of programs around to provide that connection and things like that. So, yeah, I called the Parks and Rec Department. They recommended that I come here. So I'd be happy to talk with any of you guys if there's anything we can do as parents to help with that. I was told that, you know, enrollment in some of those programs may have been low. I can almost guarantee that's an awareness issue and not an interest issue. Every single parent that I talked to about those programs, once they found out about them, either did enroll or were going to enroll over the summer. So I think if there can be some focus on really increase in awareness about those, I think that's just a struggle. And Sandpoint in general is like finding out what's going on. A lot of it's word of mouth, things like that. So, you know, whether it's catalogs, posting in the Sandpoint, you know, Facebook Moms group, you know, posting flyers at churches and children's ministries, things like that, you know, different things maybe to increase that awareness, I think, would, would solve that enrollment issue.
Thank you, Danielle. Appreciate your comments.
Adam Hall.
Good evening, members of city council. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm Adam Hall, Vice President of the Bonner County Skate Park Association. I'm filling in for our fierce leader Rory, President of the BCSA. First and foremost, I would like to thank the council for all the support over the last few years. Our partnership with the city has been great experience as a, great experience. And as a team, we have been able to give our skate community what they so much deserve. A new addition to our skate park and lights add to their experience. What a great accomplishment for a silent minority. With this new addition, with, with this new additions, BCSA is actively trying to help develop better service in the needs of our community and help heighten their experience. Through this process, lights have been, become the center of a discussion and which is why I stand before you tonight. With the summer heat and the longer days, riders become more active early morning or the last hour before the park closes. Unfortunately, the lights go out at 10:00 PM during this time period, which only allows a short evening session during the summer months. Extending the closing time would allow for a longer evening session and lights would be used to their full potential and purpose. At this time, the BCSA is requesting extending the closing of the park to 11:00 PM with the possibility of 11:30 PM timeframe requested. It's from middle of May to the middle of September would be ideal. We have BCSA. Do you understand we may have to be flexible and would like to come up with a possible solution with the city of Sandpoint?
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate the comments. We'll discuss that with staff and everyone else and seek council feedback on that.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has signed up to speak during public comment time, and I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That will conclude the comment portion of the meeting. And council, I just want to bring one thing up that came up about the awareness regarding the city parking lot. We are working on a final spec for a public kiosk calendar for the downtown parking lot that will bring to urban renewal. And it's just that sort of thing that what I would imagine, not only our council meetings, but activities, events, QR codes for signups. So that is something I acknowledge we need to do a better job of and, you know, get out there to make it as frictionless for the public to understand what's happening here. So next, consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills for approval is $963,148.41, reflecting $201,150.24 for regular payables and $762,998.17 for payroll. Accepting for the request to remove item number five by Councilman Dick. Council, do you have any questions or is there anything else being wished to remove from the consent calendar? Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the removal of item number five. Proposed resolution for the third amendment to the watershed license agreement with the Pond Ray Peddlers.
Removed.
Motion moved by Schreiber, second by Dick. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
No.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Q. Item number five will be moved to the end of our old business. First under old business is the appeal of the denial of the McGee Development Water Service application, which was postponed to this meeting. As discussion continues on a resolution of this issue, city staff and the applicant have requested council further postpone this matter to our next regular meeting, June 18th. I will entertain a motion for this postponement and let you know that legal and staff are working with the appellant to resolve this issue. So it'll be a roll call vote. Oh, I need a motion. I said.
Removed.
Second.
Moved by Howard, second by Espiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilman Sprow.
I'm curious, is there anybody from POP here?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was going to request similar to the festival item a couple of weeks ago.
Agenda around?
Move the, move to the top.
Yeah. Council, is there any objection to moving item number five, which was removed from consent calendar to our next order of business in light of the public that's come? No objection. I will proceed with item number five on the consent counter that was removed. Proposed resolution watershed license agreement number three, renewal with Pond Ray Peddlers, city agreement A235100-1. It's an action item and Councilman Dick has requested the removal from the consent. So the floor is Councilman Dick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Jason and myself, Sarah and Cheryl did have some time to speak about it. There was a little bit of confusion here and I think I'm all square, but I did want to get it out to the public or to the rest of the councilors if you guys had any questions. The way that I originally read this here, when we were talking about the first amendment, there was an increased the annual reimbursement from $10,000 to $12,200, as well as in the second amendment, give me a second. There was a total authorized reimbursement under the current agreement would be $97,200. So I think when I first read over this, this looked like there was going to be a sum of $12,200 in addition to a sum of $97,200 going to this specific amendment. And we did not, we got the amendment on here, but we didn't actually get the license agreement here. So Jason, if you could explain.
Sure. Thanks, Councilman Dick. And thanks, Mr. Mayor, for moving this up so that the POP ED, should she be called up to speak, couldn't get home to her three girls tonight. Yeah, we did discover in preparation of the of the resolution for tonight that there was there was an inconsistency in the total dollar amount of the contract since this contract began on June 2nd, 2023. So just going back a little bit before that, POP has had maintenance agreement for trails in the watershed since 2015. And starting in 2019, when Kim Woodruff was the Parks Director, the city started allocating $10,000 a year for trail maintenance reimbursables for the the maintenance work that POP does on city property. So this current license agreement was was entered into in June of 2023. And at that time, it said that it recognized the $10,000 that's budgeted annually for for maintenance. The first amendment happened later that year on September 26, 2023, when $2,200 was added to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 allocation. Where did that $2,200 come from? I had to ask Maeve actually because I didn't, I don't, I didn't remember. It was from the donation that POP made for the watershed Recreation Master Plan that was never expended towards that plan. So at the end of that agreement with the International Mountain Bike Association, they did not use the full donated amount. So Maeve, Cheryl, Sarah, whoever it was at the time, just put that back into the $10,000 to in addition to the $10,000 for POP to to use towards trail maintenance in 23. The second amendment happened about a year ago, and at that time, that's when an actual clerical error was made, not for this week. So let me explain. At that time, there was an additional $75,000. Sorry, it's kind of hard. An additional $75,000 added to the fiscal year 23, 24, $10,000. So what should have been included in that resolution in May 1st, 2024 was an additional $85,000. Because it turns out with this license agreement, each year, we need to articulate that year's allocation of budget money towards trails. So last year, it was 10,000 plus the 75 that the mayor approved for mitigation of erosion in the watershed. So the the last year's resolution was actually incorrectly indicated as being for $75,000 when it should have been for an addition of 85,000. So that brings us to the total at that time should have been the $97,200. Bringing us to this year, we're renewing the the agreement for another year. We're recognizing the $10,000 that's already in the budget for the new fiscal year, bringing the total agreement amount over four years to $107,200. That's that's what, there was some discrepancy because the draft that was published late last week only showed the total amount as $97,200. Sarah caught it when she said, well, you realize you've only got $40 you can reimburse POP this year based on the total, the the maximum articulated in this in this resolution. And that's when Maeve and I just had to go back and with Cheryl's help and Sarah's help, we realized the discrepancy actually happened last May when the 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 addition of 75 did not take into account the 10,000 that was already budgeted for. So that's a little background. And if you do the math, we've got 10,000 from fiscal year 22, 23, plus 2,200 from fiscal year 22, 23. That's the leftover from the Little Sand Creek Watershed Rec Plan. We have 75,000 plus 10,000 from fiscal year 23, 24. Then we have 20, sorry, 10,000 from fiscal year 24, 25, bringing us to a total of 107,200. To clarify, for the council, for the public, the 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 107,000 is not an increase beyond what's already been provided over the last three years, plus the 10,000 that was already in the budget for this year. So going forward, POP's going to continue, I assume, to receive the $10,000 allocation for trail maintenance reimbursable only upon expenses. And if you're curious what they're, what kind of things they're spending that money on us. Emily, the executive director is here tonight. She could tell you a little bit about their maintenance work if you if you'd like to hear from her. So that's just to clarify the the discrepancy, which we only discovered this week, but was actually made a year ago. So apologies for the confusion on all that.
Awesome. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks, Director Welker and 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 council. I apologize for mistakes. We do about 150 contracts and agreements a year. So at times, we're not perfect. We do get a couple that have typos or numbers. Thanks for keeping us accountable and we'll try to do our best moving forward. Any other questions on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the item number five.
Removed.
Second.
Motion by Dick, second by Rule. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks for attending. Sorry, we didn't get to call you up. Next, under new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Can we take a short break before we get to?
Go for it. Let's do a five minute break. It's 6:43. We'll reconvene at 6:44, 6:49. Reconvening at 6:51. Moving on to new business, item number seven is a request for city council review and determination of expiration of the application for University Place Plan Unit Development Phase Four, city file PPUD 22-0001. For the record, conflict of interest, because the applicant was once a client of mine, although I have no financial interest in the outcome of this decision, I will be recusing myself from this matter and will hand the gavel to Council President Rule to preside over this portion of the meeting. Council President Rule, if you don't mind, thank you.
Oh, my goodness, he's so much taller than me. Can't see you. Okay, all right. We are on to, oh, wrong page. We'll hear from the applicant shortly, but first I will yield the floor to City Planner Bill Dean for some quick information.
Good evening, Council President, councilors. For the record, Bill Dean, City Planner, it's a pleasure to be here this evening with you to walk you through an interesting sort of agenda item that's been brought to you. It's not, it's not often we're going to ask for your interpretation on a code, but really that's what it is tonight is this relates to the University Place PUD project. This is a special permit that the city council issued back in November of 2022. It's not a permit that you issue very often, and it's got a lot of moving parts to it. It's basically a waiver from zoning standards enabled to do something creative with development. And in exchange, there's public benefits that accrue to the city by virtue of what the developer provides in the project. And all that has been vetted out. And this evening, I want to keep it really simple. There's a, there's, you know, when staff reviews these projects and as we dive in, we have to, we have to look at the code. We have to look at the at the at the record and adhere to what we see. And in this particular case, after spending quite a bit of time on a on a project that that has a lot of moving parts and for which a lot of work has been done, both on behalf of the developers, well as city staff and yourselves and and commissions that have been involved, we have to take a look at the record and we arrived at the point where we realized the project PUD had expired. And, you know, staff has to adhere to what the what the code says. We were not in a position to staff members on a council issued special permit to be able to say, well, that that expiration date doesn't occur. However, you know, that provision is established in 10310M of the Sandpoint City Code. There is a an additional provision in 10310M that enables you to arrive at an interpretation, should you choose to, that enables an expiration or to be extended, to to have the permit given an extra timeline. And what's unclear about that provision of the code is whether or not you should apply for that expiration, that extension prior to the permit expiring or not. So really, this this evening, you're asked to to really make a decision on what's in the best interest of the community as it relates to that code provision. And it has a real bearing on on this project. Again, we looked at the record and the record is really clear that you didn't have a building permit, didn't have a final plat. These are some some elements of the project that are that are factually accurate. But it's also true that there has been a lot of work done. There's been infrastructure installed. There's been numerous interactions with with various city staff over the years. There's been a flurry of activity late last year trying to trying to bring this project to the next step. So really, the question for you is, is it reasonable for you to accept the extension that was filed in March of this year for the permit that expired in in November of last year? I can't make that determination, but you certainly can. And in in order to make that determination, you really ask to, you know, assess whether it's a reasonable conclusion to reach based on the information you hear. My staff report really lays out just the factual information, but I think it is important to note that, you know, land use permitting and plating, especially when put together, can be complicated. There's a lot of moving parts. There's deadlines and timelines throughout the statutes, throughout the codes that that guide our actions collectively, yours and as well as the developers, the cities, as well as the developers. I think there's been real interest on behalf of all parties to to see this project walk through. You spent an awful lot of time arriving at the decision to approve it through a very deliberate process. And you really have had a lot of involvement since then, from what I can gather from the record. It's really been, okay, this is now off to the implementation phase, which is naturally a developer led effort with city staff and doing its, you know, checking of the permits and the plats along the way. So with that, I just, I want to leave you with a sense that, you know, if 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 we're curious about what the next steps might be for this project, it it stands to reason there is there is some room to for a council to be able to say, given the the moving parts, given the fact that there's, you know, it's a complex project that has been turned over to staff. I think that's part of it, too. Stands to reason that that you do have the ability, you know, I want you to feel comfortable. You could, you could just look at this very factually and say, look, you didn't meet the threshold. You don't have the permits. You don't have the plat. It's 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 expired. But he did file for an extension when he learned that the that the project had expired. So I I can answer a lot of questions. I can get into the details. But really, I didn't want to dive into all of and relitigate the project and its pros and cons because that's really not what's what's important tonight. What's important tonight is is do we have enough information reasonably for council to arrive a decision that staff can't make? Staff's not allowed to make that kind of a decision. This is something what council can make. So I just want to leave my remarks at that to to open it. I'm certainly here to answer questions and and engage in any way you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Does the council have any questions for staff at this time?
I do.
Councilwoman Duquette?
Just because I was not part of this before, I watched that meeting. And I just have some, I'm just trying to get a handle on it. I think that the developer asked at the time if you could extend the two year time period. And Amy said she didn't think so. And she thought that you could extend the five years, but not the two year limit to get started. So that's correct.
It can be extended.
It can be.
Yes, it can.
The two year can?
Yes, it can.
Okay, because I I thought she said could not. So I'm trying to get this straight.
Yeah, 10310M establishes that. It's straight, it's straight out of the code. And we can, we can bring that up on the screen if we have to, but it's 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 in black and white. It can be done.
Okay.
But it can't be done by staff.
Right, okay. And then I know that the counselors wanted amenities started within that two year time. Were they started in that two year time?
The amenities, the amenities, like anything in land development, go through a process. It's not just a matter of putting a shovel in the ground, have the amenities. There's plans that are developed, there's specs, specifications, there's concepts. That work, some of that work in terms of the paperwork assigned, you know, associated with that may have started. There's nothing in my files that suggests that any level of detail beyond what was presented to city council in the November 22 timeframe was brought back to council. There may have been some things shared between the developer and previous staff, but nothing was approved. So started is a is an interesting word in a land development context. Safe to say that I that there may have been some initial ideas, but no, certainly no work has been started on amenities for the project or design documents approved for any of the amenities.
Is that what was requested by the council? Jason, I think you had shared that.
Council President? Counselor Duquette, are you talking about the developer agreement number 10? Detail plans for the open spaces incorporating staff recommended changes are provided and incorporated into the master development agreement. Specifically, such plans shall include a children's playground, including city staff approved play structures in the revised 11,000 square foot park at the corner of the East Ebbett Way and Herring Avenue, increased in size from 8,000 square foot as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and indicated as a tot lot on the revised open space plan dated October 21, 2022. An asphalt pump track designed to be approved by city parks planning staff in the 41,000 square foot open space indicated on the revised open space plan dated October 21, 2022. A paved pedestrian bicycle pathway from North Boyle Avenue, shared shared use pathway to the pump track at the south end of the development, extension of the linear park pathway at the north end of the development to Northboard Avenue, dogway station throughout the development to be maintained by the HOAs.
Right, I understand what the amenities were, but was the question, did, was it requested that that was started in that two year time?
That would have been implied since the development had to had to start. What what I think is telling to answer that question is condition number 14, the council imposed on the project, which establishes that there's going to be some phasing addressed in a later development agreement, which you've never seen.
And then there was some issue about talk about phasing. I remember.
That's right.
Honda said there was no phasing or.
There wasn't a phase proposed at the hearing, but the condition 14 suggests, in my reading of the condition, that phasing was contemplated. And looking at the exhibits that were worked on by prior staff, again, none of this, as you've seen, were, to my understanding, were a phasing exhibit that was that was attached to this draft development group that was never finalized. So the the idea that you, the expectation these things were done up front, I think there's room for interpretation there, yet reading these, you know, condition 10 together with 14 and the idea that this staff work had led to this phasing concept that never saw the light of day seems to suggest there was an alignment of when certain amenities were going to be brought on, given the phasing of the project. Since the phasing of the project didn't come up at the hearing in 2022, the work I've seen suggests that there was conversations about how those amenities could be phased. None of that was finalized. But what I see, the staff work prior, there was some effort at trying to arrive at what that phase could mean. You just haven't seen it.
So, excuse me, Bill. I just want to remind council, we're here to determine whether or not we can continue the agreement or if the agreement's expired. We're not here to debate the different technicalities of development agreements or not. A development agreement would require another public hearing. So that's not the question at hand. The question at hand is, is the PUD expired? Or does the council choose to extend that expiration to a time certain?
I'm just trying to get some background on it.
I agree, it's very confusing. I do appreciate that, but I want to keep us focused on what we're trying to decide on. That those things would come at a later date if.
In a development agreement, basically.
Council was to choose to, depending on the decision that is made tonight.
Madam President?
Yes.
Good deal. Thank you. It it appears that both parties are in agreement that there was a number of communications via email, phone calls between November 2nd, 2024, when the PUD expired and the preliminary plat expired to when Mr. Mulgrew was notified on March 13th of 2025 that the PUD was expired. How many other employees of the city besides yourself were involved with communication with Mr. Mr. Mulgrew after the PUD expired? And one caveat, I'm just looking at your timeline right here. 11/12/24, the city engineer verified that the public infrastructure associated with the permit. On 10/15/21, an amended on 4/16/2024 was completed to city standards. 12/19, the developer applies for a final plat for phase four and a preliminary plat. 12/31/25, developer submits first building permit applications. So would Mr. Mulgrew have been communicating with yourself and you back with him and Jason and Brandon and any other staff after the PUD had expired?
There would have been very few people with knowledge or arguably interest or involvement in the project. But who may have communicated with Mr. Mulgrew? I'm I'm unaware of who that might have been, but you name the people who would have been reviewing the project. Jason, myself, Brandon, certainly. The three of us really were the ones looking at this, trying to ascertain what was going on. It took us, it took us till after the expiration date to figure out what had actually occurred. It's a lot, a lot of information to to sort through.
Sure. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Mr. Dean, is there anything in the city ordinance that says it's the city's responsibility to notify the contractor when the PUD is ending?
No, sir.
So the responsibility is on the contractor to understand their timeline?
Yeah, especially on something as complicated with as many moving parts as a as a subdivision, coupled with a special permit like a PUD. There's a, there's a lot of different variables at play between preliminary plat, final plat. We're there to assist. We're there to answer questions. We're there to do what we can. But in the end, with 100 and something building permits every year, you know, dozens of land use permits, each with its own sets of timeframes, things can be extended. That's a job that's that that each property owner is responsible for. But we're sensitive to it, certainly.
Thank you. And if I go to our city code, the SCC 10-3-10M that you referenced, the paragraph is pretty clear and it and it suggests to me that you cannot take a single sentence out and and assess the validity of it. My point being, if you just simply look at the last sentence, an extension of the time limit, revision of the phasing schedule or modification may be approved. revision of the phasing schedule or modification may be approved if the commission finds that such extension revision or modification is not in conflict with the public interest. My point is that you have to read the whole paragraph to get the content and the context of that statement. And up above, it is very, very clear that if no construction has begun within two years after approval is granted and no current building permit exists, the approved final development plan shall be void. After it's voided, you cannot go and ask for an extension. The extension clearly says it has to be done within that two-year, two-year window. So as I read that, even though it's not specific that it has to be done in that period, once it's void, it's void. You can't then at that point come and ask for an extension. I view that as very clear. I think to then try and just go pull that sentence out independent of the rest of the context is unfair to the city code and and trying in some ways to go override exactly the clarity that it does in totality provide. So I'll just leave that as my comments. As I, as I look at the request to extend this. Yes, an extension can be done, but it's got to be while the PUD is still valid.
Okay, Councilman Houseworth, we will have time to deliberate after the applicant. So appreciate your comments, though. Any other council members who would like to ask staff questions at this time?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Just reading this, ten three ten M says an extension may be approved by if the commission finds. Does that mean that we're only deciding tonight whether the applicant can apply for an extension? And then that extension would be, would go in front of planning and zoning to determine whether the the extension would be granted?
Good question. I think, I think, well, attorneys can weigh in on the legality of, thanks, Zach.
I'll answer that, yeah. So I mean, I think that the that this is a question of code interpretation. And that is, and so essentially what we're asking the council to do is is to is decide what ten three ten M says. And because this is a question of of code interpretation, this is, this is squarely within the prerogative of of council. And so we're essentially elevating this to council to make it a determination on whether one, can an extension be granted after the PUD has expired? And if yes, two, is it not in conflict with the public interest to do so? So we would be asking council to essentially make that extension should council decide that it can be done.
But a positive answer on one does not necessarily guarantee a positive answer on question two.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? It looks like we have no further questions from council. I will now call the applicant or applicant's representative to the podium. Please state your name and who you represent if you are not the applicant.
Hello. Thank you, Derek Mulgrew. Let me join here really quick. Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you so much. Thrilled to be back in front of you. If you all might remember.
May I interrupt, please?
Yes.
Derek, can you turn off this?
Oh, did I not, you did?
Wall surface on your tablet there.
Thank you. Oh, the audio says it's muted. Here.
So, yeah, Zoom is muted, but your machine isn't. Speaker. Your speaker is.
I'm not a Zoom rookie either. I'm on Zoom calls twenty-four hours a day, so that's embarrassing. I apologize. Thank you for the opportunity to get back in front of you. I'm Derek Mulgrew. I'm the owner, developer, representative, head coffee maker, all, all things under the sun for this project. And I've always chose to represent my project. When I came to this group minus Pam in two thousand twenty-two, Jeremy was the consultant on the back end because he knew the code and understands it inside and out, and that's advantageous to have somebody that can tell me what you can and can't do, right? But I presented it to council. And the reason being is because I'm a local developer and we're not some massive multimillion dollar organization. I bought this land in two thousand nineteen from the University of Idaho. It was actually just kind of fell into my lap. And I'd driven past it and the old U of I building for twenty-two years going to Schweitzer. And so here we are. And I I came to make the public comment the time that I, most recently, when it, when it was taken off the agenda, just to to help you all understand that the most challenging part about being an applicant in this position is getting in front of this body when you have disagreements. And disagreements are, they're, they always happen. I mean, you can ask Bill and all of his experience, and nothing goes perfectly. But there's not a chance to elevate that to you all. And so, you know, we started off and, you know, your comments, Pam first, Deb, and then Rick, I want to address those because I think it actually soon as that happened, I I was like, this is the flow that I'll follow. Background is important, Pam, because this is, this thing goes, look at this staff report and all the dates. I mean, where do you even start? I think what is important for you to understand is that all the previous development, which is base camp out there, that's Williams Homes, that has nothing, nothing to do with what we're talking about today. That was in an entitled phase long, twenty twenty-one, if memory serves me right. And it's built out. Most of the homes are are there today. Phase four was preliminary approved through that entitlement action. And then I came in with a planned unit development, a rezone, an amendment to that plat. And the reason that I was asking for those things is there was no, nothing in our code to allow us to build attached fee simple townhomes. And I see them in every metro area, everywhere I travel in the rest of the part of the country. And why is that so important? Because condominiums are hard to get financing on. There's usually only a certain amount of condominiums that can be owned versus leased. You can't get FHA financing on condominiums. So fee simple ownership is really important for access to financing, and it hits a lower price point because it's a, it's a, it's affordable to build. So that was the, that was really the impetus behind why I said, let's build a bunch of town. We need this. I mean, and Amazon is here now. I mean, we've got all these little great boutique companies and aerospace and medical device and these people need a place to live and single-family homes, homes in the city of Sandpoint are a million bucks. I mean, we can build a town home for and sell it for four hundred thousand dollars. Four of them just hit the market across the street from this development that that Culvers Crossing PUD went through at about the same time as this. So I I share the background because Pam, it's relevant because you need some context. But Deb, I totally appreciate that you reeled it in because I'm going to be back, unfortunately for you all, because I'm long-winded. But I'll be back and we're going to get into the details of the development agreement and where it left off and all those amenities we talked about and what will come in the phasing. You know, so moving on to Rick's questions and comments, right? You, you bring up a valid point. When you look at the way the code is is written, I didn't write the code. I mean, normally in jurisdictions, it explicitly states that extensions must be requested prior to the expiration date. That's what your code should say. I'm not here to, you know, advocate that you change it, but you should change it because because it, it's not clear, right? What is clear is that an extension can be granted after the expiration date because it says it cannot. So that's where I, and I see where you're coming from, Rick. I wanted to address that, but if you go layers further and you read that section of the code, it talks about construction and building permits. Usually when you just, a novice non-developer thinks construction, they think vertical construction. Construction is, in this instance, is not. It's horizontal. It's infrastructure. One point six million dollars of HDPE pipe, brass fittings, valves, fire hydrants, a tap back to Boyer, which dug twelve feet deep and, you know, deterred traffic in two thousand twenty-three for two weeks. An extension of 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 Boyer and widening per this agreement. The, through the two approaches, a new turn lane into both of this development. All the infrastructure for multiple phases of this project installed, tested and approved within the two years. What can a developer do to control your controllables? The only thing that I can do is schedule our subcontractors, you know, meet with and coordinate with staff, right? Deploy the infrastructure in the timeframe that that's allowed. What I can't do, and I would never even try to do, is impose a timeline on our public servants who have a laundry list of, of, of programs and and developments that they're monitoring, right, through the process. Not to mention all of our staff changeover and shortages this poor city's gone through. I've had to pick this up and put it down with six different city staff members. That's not the current staff's fault. In fact, the current staff is probably the most by the book. So why this was so challenging, I think, for them was picking up pit bits and pieces from all these other staff members, right, that had touched it and put it down. I held the keys in terms of knowing everything that was going on. So I would, when it was requested, deploy the information that I had. And so, long-winded way, Rick, to say the code doesn't say it needs to be requested before it expires. It should. In this case, it doesn't. But I met the definition of construction. All the infrastructure is installed. And if you think about, why does the code say this? It's for two reasons. It protects the city because if a developer gets their project approved and they do absolutely nothing, it should expire. It also protects a developer that deploys millions of dollars of infrastructure from the approval being taken away. So I could go through, I have here prepared all of these emails and timelines and everything that's been submitted and back and forth as Brandon and Bill and Jason tried to recreate what other staff members juggled. I don't think that's necessary. What I want you to hear is that all of the infrastructure was installed and signed off for within the two years. One of you mentioned something about, I think it was you, Pam, a request for a longer period of time during the application. And I I absolutely did request seven years instead of five. And that wasn't allowed. So the code allowed for two for the planning portion of it and the deployment of infrastructure, and then another five years to build it out. And I, I think, again, this isn't bill, bill didn't do this intentionally, but the project was six phases. It was absolutely known that the project was six phases. Am I not presenting again? Did I manage to mess that up? Oh, here, I need, let's go like this. I'd encourage you, if, you know, don't take my word for it. Go back and and watch it, but these were the six phases that were presented to you all back in two thousand twenty-two. So the infrastructure currently is in for on that map for four B, four F and four A. So that's a complete herring, Ebbett, tidenda, Boyer, Boyer widening, new turn lanes, installed sidewalks, curb gutter, a Vista Utilities, which is electric and gas. And in four A, that is the first block of townhomes that would have hit the market. And you just saw Jason give a presentation on your building permits plunging. There's sixteen in that phases. There's a hundred and three total townhomes in this development. I think those numbers would have been a lot higher if this project was allowed to move forward. So, you know, that's why I think these facts are really, really important because if you zoom out, again, why is this code written the way that it is? It's to protect the developer and it's to protect the city. All the infrastructure is installed for those phases and signed off for, by the city, inspected, tested and signed off for. And all we were doing is trying to get the plat and the development agreement back in front of you all. And in good faith, the, the, the public service that they are managing and juggling all the projects and trying to recreate all the other staff touching this, did their best to get that done. And I can't control that process, right? I cannot force it to get back in front of of you all. All I can do is meet the timeframe for the deployment of infrastructure. So that's why I believe you all should grant an extension in this case. And then I think you should go change your code because and I don't know if Zach will have a dissertation on this from legal or not, and I'm out there in left field, but what, what could be problematic for you is you don't want to let developers run past timelines and ask for extensions, right? That's not, that's not what you want to do. That's not the intent. But here, this is different. This is completely different. All of it was installed in the two-year timeframe, and I had begged for more time. And we worked on it for four months after the expiration date. And I'll bring one other fact up, too. If I can find the date, it was May twelfth. May sixteenth. The contract planner at the time, Darren Fluke, right, because I, I started with Amanda Wilson and Dan Tadic. Dan left, then Betsy out of Boise was the contract engineer. And then Amanda left and they hired, I think it went back to Darren, then they hired Amy. Amy left. I got Darren again. We actually brought with Zach the development agreement to a place where it was ready to come back to you all. And then Bill was hired. Then Bill did his due diligence and he added things to the development agreement. We didn't agree on all of those things, but it was supposed to get back in front of you. And so everybody worked in good faith, long past the expiration date, long past it. I never thought I even needed an expiration or an extension because I met the definition of deploying the infrastructure within the timeframe. So I'm accused of being totally long-winded, and that's why I laugh, because I'm going to be back in front of you all. This body unanimously approved this development in two thousand twenty-two. I'm confident you'll approve this extension and I'll be back with the plat and the development agreement. You have any questions for me?
Madam President?
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilman Spurrow?
Did I hear correctly that you said Bill added stuff to the development agreement?
Yes, quite a bit.
Do you mind sharing what what those were?
Yes, yeah. So on the first development agreement revision from Bill, well, let me back up. The fine, the development agreement that I had agreed to in terms of being at a place where I was happy was in
Madam President, if I can interrupt for just a second?
Yes, please.
I appreciate that Mr. Mulgrew is answering quite the question of counsel. My concern is, is that this is not a public hearing.
Correct.
And so we shouldn't be rehashing. I mean, there is a time and a place to have this conversation.
Yeah.
But it needs to be at a public hearing. And so I don't want to get into the weeds of the development agreement.
On the agenda, I was gonna think, Zach, I appreciate that. On the agenda, it said hearing. I don't, I was confused if this was a public hearing or not myself.
That's, that's a fair question. It is not a
Right. So again, this is what's Right. So again, this is what's challenging, right? Is like, the development agreements need to be adopted through a public hearing process, right? That's the one that got canceled last time, two days before. My previous development agreements didn't go through a public hearing. You know, I I don't enforce the rule, the rules, right? Like, but I just try to follow whatever current staff is telling me to do. And so I I just bring that up because you're right, right? We shouldn't get into those weeds. And Joel, they they aren't things that we aren't going to figure out. But the reality is, it needs to get in front of you. Like Bill did such a great job presenting earlier, is like, this isn't from, this isn't his decision, it's yours. So when it comes to the development agreement, we'll be back in front of you. I'll clearly tell you what I want, and Bill can tell you what he wants, and we'll duke it out, and you guys will decide.
Madam President.
Councilman Howard.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I do have a, back to the the city code. I think it's important for us to to discuss what it does say and what it doesn't. You articulated that you have put in a significant amount of infrastructure. I've, yesterday I drove through it. I saw it all in. But the code says if no construction has begun, so we'll agree, you've met that, you put in infrastructure. And it's important, there's an and there, no current building permit exists. I think i- is it fair to say there is no building permit existing today?
Correct. It was applied for after the expiration date.
After the expiration. And it's not been granted yet because at this point, we're saying it's the PUD's void.
Well, the the reason why it hasn't been granted is because there wasn't a final plat approved. So actually, that's what's really important. And I think, thank you for bringing that up, Rick, because I can't get a building permit without a final plat. So again, the only thing is the developer that I can control is installing the infrastructure in the timeframe that's allotted. And then the rest of it's pushing paperwork, right? So there was no building permit in the timeframe. We applied for one shortly thereafter, and we were just waiting for the city to do their work and approve the final plat. So that's why there was, there couldn't have been a building permit received because the city needed to approve the plat.
And if I go a little bit further in that that ordinance toward the end, it says it it talks about that we can't extend as long as there is no, there is not a conflict with the public interest. Can you talk to us or share with us what the public interest is in this project? What is the benefit to the public?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the PUD application, the benefit to the public was housing. That actually was the narrative. It was fee simple workforce housing. Were there? There were amenities associated with the phasing of the project. And I think someone, maybe Joel, you 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 recounted some of them. Taught law to pump track. And those came, you know, again, when we get to the development agreement, it comes back to you. Those came at specific time points during the phase development.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Councilman Dick.
Thank you for coming in. Just a couple of quick questions. If this body was to grant you the extension that you were looking for this evening, how much time would you anticipate that you would need in the extension? Given some additional time for working with city staff and for everything that they're juggling to comply with the original 2022 PUD wholly?
Well, good question, because the the PUD allotted for two years plus five, right? So or, yeah, five total. So the first two years where where it could be expired, right? So it's still running, meaning again, I had staff members, previous staff members already say you don't need an extension because you put the infrastructure in, right? The infrastructure is not in by definition on the other phases. If you remember the other phases that I said that these phases it's in on, right? B, F, and A. I I would never need to come back for an extension, deploying infrastructure in those other phases. That's another five years, right? So so I guess, to answer your question, I need however much time our city staff members need to bring that plat and development agreement back to you, which was ready in in May of 2024. And then Bill and I did some revisions to the plat. You know, they had specific nomenclature they wanted on the plat. We went through that exercise. I can't force it. So I guess six months would be, I can't imagine we wouldn't be able to get. But and remember, too, in context, we've already applied for building permits. So we were ready to build in January, you know, when we had some, a break in the winter. So I I guess I would ask, oh, Bill, how long do you think you can take to process my my plat and development agreement? What do you think is a reasonable timeframe? I'm only going to respond to questions from counsel.
Okay.
May I, Madam President, may I ask Bill the same question?
I believe you cannot at this point because we are only in questions for the applicant. So I believe you'll be able to ask staff when we deliberate again. Is that correct, Zach?
Thank you.
The good part, Justin, is that you know, we could always ask for another extension, I guess. I mean, six months, I would sure hope we have all the paperwork pushed. I mean, my my, when the infrastructure was signed off in August of 2024 and the final plat, the the first draft final plat was sent in in September, sorry, May, I gotta look at that again, long before the expiration date. And here we are today, you know, with no final plat, no development agreement. I mean, I would think six months would be more than enough time. I just, again, in all due respect to our city staff, they're picking up pieces from four people before them. So that's why I do say I I feel for them because I mean, if you look at the email chains, I mean, I mean, I I'm not joking when I say I have 32 emails with Bill Dean. I have 38 emails with Brandon Stanley, 77 emails for for Amy Tweetin, 66 with Amanda, 15 with Darren Fluke, and 17 with Dan Tadic. 11 in-person meetings. I I mean, you know, so I just don't want that to come across as I want the staff to to work harder or prioritize my development over another. I just want to get back in front of you to get the plat so we can get to building. Six months would be great.
Do we have further questions from counsel? At this time, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mulgrew. Counsel will now discuss.
Thank you.
And deliberate toward a decision. Is there any discussion or deliberation?
Madam President, may I go back to that question to Bill on how much time do you think is needed?
Yes, she may.
Thank you.
Yeah, for most applicants, it's it's not much time at all. Well, this one is quite the contrary.
So does six months sound reasonable that Mr. Mulgrew threw out there?
If if he thinks he can get this done in six months, that that would be astonishing to me. Yes, I think I would, I welcome that challenge.
What type of a timeframe would you put on it where you guys are at with city staff, knowing that we potentially?
If I did nothing else, I I I think you'd probably need a little bit more time than I'm being honest just because of of the nature of how I of come to understand how he conducts business, which is a little bit different than others. So six months, seven months, eight months. If if coun- if counsel is interested in extending this, give it a fair shot because there's a lot that is missing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other deliberation from?
Madam President, I I will just comment. I I can totally understand the complexity of this, having to work through numerous planning personnel as the city has shifted. That that complexity leads me to to lead to lean toward granting an extension because I do think there is a public value to the development that you're trying to implement. At the same time, I I sense there is some difficulty, and I don't know where it exists in moving this project forward. And so if we do grant it, I don't know what it what it requires for you, Mr. Mulgrew, and our planning departments to come together and get a clear direction of how to move forward. I'm not in those meetings, and I'm not looking for an answer. But if I do grant that, I certainly hope that you and our planning department can come together, find common ground and move this forward. Because the the worst thing would be for us to extend it, and then at the end of that extension, we're back here saying we still don't have a project that's moving forward.
The the hearing is closed, and so it's just that this is time for deliberations, and then they they can ask questions of staff. And and if I can kind of loop back briefly to Counselor Dick's comments as well. I do think there are, of course, some some factual disagreements between why it was delayed. And and I don't think we need to get into that, that that frankly doesn't matter. We're just questioning, just interpreting the code for today. However, with respect to how long, should counsel decide that it can extend the PUD? The question of how long, I I think what we don't want to do is be back here in six months. I think six months is too tight of a frame. I I would suggest a year or at least nine months. We don't want this to run forever, of course, either. But I I do think that we do, we should suggest a number to counsel because I think that will help your decision, so.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question.
Councilwoman Duquette of us.
Does this set a precedent? Or other times, somebody might miss the expiration date? And does that mean code needs to be amended to be more clear, I guess?
I could maybe answer that, Councilwoman Duquette. I believe that discussions with the mayor that I've had that we will be updating this code and making it more clear that counsel will not be put in this position again, if that answers it enough.
So then that would not happen again?
Hopefully, we can have a clarification of the code so that it's clear for city staff as much as it is clear for developers. So we don't run into these problems in the future. Code is difficult to write and as difficult as we see tonight to interpret. So but we can try to do a better job, and I believe staff is working on that.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Schreiber.
Question for Zach along those same lines. I guess it didn't fully occur to me until just now, but if we were to interpret this code that an extension could be requested after a project is void, I think that's the language it uses, would that mean that any project that has ever been expired could come back to us right now?
So to answer, I I guess, both questions. Again, there's, this is, this is a compound question as far as this interpretation. So the question one, can an applicant or can a PUD be extended after it's after the expiration date? If the answer to that is yes, then the answer to your question is yes. Other people could come back and request that their their PUDs be resurrected, if you will. The the the, you're kind of insulated to an extent by the second component of this question. Whereas in that determination, you still need to make a finding or a decision that it's not in conflict with the public interest. And so you still have that component of the of the code that protects, I guess, the precedents that you'd be you'd be making. And then ultimately, I think we all agree that there there's going to be a code revision coming.
And regardless of whether we do a code revision, would the prior applicants be able to argue that they were working on the code that existed at the time of their expiration rather than? I mean, without going too far down this rabbit hole.
That's a, that's, that's a fair question and a good question. And I frankly, I don't know the answer to that. My knee-jerk reaction would say they might be applying this code because this is the code that they've been operating under the entire time. But to be perfectly honest, should that situation arise, I'd be doing a legal analysis on that question.
And then one more question. It seems to me that if we were to decide that this code does allow for an extension at this point, that we should be going through a public hearing where the public has an opportunity to weigh in on whether this is in the public interest. Is that not the case?
So the public hearing comes to in the development agreement, whether or not the 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 interpretation of this code, that doesn't need to be done through a public hearing. And so that's, that's city council's prerogative. So the code interpretation here, I mean, I I think you can rely on the public hearing that occurred in the previous PUD to make, to provide the foundation to determine whether or not allowing this extension is in the public interest. You're not making any decisions on the PUD itself, on the development agreement itself. Whether or not it's in the public interest is just a narrow question as far as allowing the extension.
Okay, thank you.
So is it in the public interest to allow somebody to extend past?
Cor- correct, and because semantics and and words matter, it's a negative, the code reads it in a negative. Is it not in conflict with the public interest? So just keep that in mind when you're thinking this through.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Shapiro.
Looking at the code here, maybe Bill. So if if no construction has begun, I've heard the word infrastructure and construction. Are those synonymous or there could those be different? Could infrastructure not be construction?
I think it's reasonable to conclude that infrastructure is construction.
Okay.
I don't think there's a lot of wiggle room on the building permit front.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Councilman Dick.
Thank you. When I was reviewing this, I I had a really challenging time getting over. I understand what the code says. I understand what's being asked of us this evening. But I had a hard time getting over, both parties continued to communicate after November 2, 2024, for roughly four months where things were moving along on Mr. Mulgrew's part. I don't have any fault. I'm sure there was things going on in both places. There are some unforeseen circumstances, I might say. Amanda, Dan, Darren, Amy, Bill, Brandon, a lot of moving parts and pieces to this. I do think this is in the public's benefit and in the public interest. And I would be willing to vote or make a motion to extend this for eight months.
Would anybody like to second that motion?
I'd like to deliberate on that.
No, absolutely.
I remember going through this and, you know, I've never been a believer that nobody's ever been able to explain to me affordable housing or et cetera, right? They've always come and like, yeah, it's good for the community. As I understand it, market dictates prices. I understand there's different housing that's cheaper than others, and I and I can appreciate developers trying to do that. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's no free, free hands out, free hands, hands out. But one thing I remember is the reason I have highlighted in my notes here, number 10, with public benefit, these, you know, pump track, you know, with Amazon, all these places coming here, as as was said earlier, these are going to be families that don't just want sidewalks or a street. You know, the excitement was, to be clear, public benefit of parks and fun things for families to do because that was the target. So with the public benefit, I just want to keep that in mind as we're interpreting code here. That of, it's not in conflict with the public interest. It's not just housing, it's community for people as well. So I just wanted to bring that up in connection with Counselor Dick's comment about, you know, is this good for the, is this in conflict with the public interest? I think the public interest is not just housing, but community places for kids to do things. So as we move forward, Counselor Dick, with your, are you making a motion? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I would, I would.
That we are very clear with the development agreement, as I read here, that these things would, number 10, would be accomplished, that we'd make sure that we are aligned with the development agreement. Maybe he's going to come back to us with all these things, and and maybe, maybe staff can walk us through the process. Say we have a one-year extension. Maybe that'd be helpful for myself if you can. And moving forward with the decision, maybe you can guide us what this would look like. Because what I don't want to lose is the public interest of these amenities for families living in this area.
Councilwoman Shapiro, the development agreement would have to be a public hearing, so it would come back before this council for approval.
Walk us through.
Right.
I I can briefly.
Okay, because we just wanted to stay focused on the the decision tonight.
I think it is relevant.
I I agree.
To the decision tonight, because that's otherwise why we're here.
I- interpretation of the development, or excuse me, interpretation. I- interpretation of the development, or excuse me, interpretation of the conditions has been a little bit of an issue. However, what what's council is deciding tonight is the PUD with the conditions that were approved in November of of twenty twenty-two. And those conditions, uh, staff has no intention of wavering from those conditions. So those conditions will be included in any development agreement that is brought back before council. And it's up to council to modify or change those at a public hearing, which is why we're kind of staying away from those today because we're not in a public hearing. Did that answer your question?
Did that clarify for you? Okay, excellent. Thank you for getting clarification, Councilwoman Spiro. So that Further deliberation, uh, Councilwoman Duquette.
Brings me to my question about starting the pump track and the tot lot. I remember in that video, counselors asked for that to be started. And what I was trying to find out was that put as a condition? Was that part of what you're talking about, conditions?
That's exactly right. The the conditions, I believe, numbers fourteen and ten, if if I recall correctly, uh, speak to that most specifically. So the timing of those amenities will be addressed in the development agreement.
Thank you. That's what I tried to get at at the very beginning because I saw that.
We will address it.
In the, okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Um, Councilwoman Schreiber.
Yeah, I guess I'll just weigh in with my opinion here that uh, you know, I'm I'm sympathetic to what has already been said. The uh, I I do think that this provides a type of housing that we are lacking. And it also offers some uh amenities that could offer a public benefit. But question number one is, are we, is how we interpret the code? And um I have to look at it from the intent rather than the the strict letter. And I think it's questionable to say that the intent was not to have applicants ask for an extension prior to the expiration. I I'm sympathetic to Councilman Howard's previous comments that as much as I like this particular project, I think it's important that we uh interpret this code properly, in which my opinion is that it does not allow for extensions past the expiration.
Any further comments or deliberation from council? Then I would go back to Councilman Dick if you would like to restate your motion now that we've all had deliberation. So we know what your motion was. So if you.
Clarifying question, Madam President, to Zach. On the timeframe of the extension, did you say you would feel much more comfortable at a year?
I I mean, it's entirely up, it's entirely up to council, uh, what's appropriate. Um, I was just sort of balancing uh Mr. Mulgrew of six months versus the realities of um how this process is going to play out. And so I, it's entirely up to council, but I did say a year, but I was.
Year, Bill, timeframe, six months, eight months?
I think eight months is um, I think that that's just for for, let me, let me explain why. It's going to become really apparent tomorrow how long this is going to take. And um if it's based on anything like the the four months that that I I've spent on this project already, I can tell you that we're going to need that that uh eight months. If you if you go longer than that, um, you you get the sense of losing some some urgency to get to get things going. Pract- as a practical matter, eight months is really, you know, things are wrapped up by the end of this year because you've got to do hearing notices and things like that. So um I like to keep the fire hot, um, especially when we're trying to problem solve. And um that's why I suggest eight months.
Thank you. May I ask any other counselors if you're leaning towards extension on the timeframe before I make a motion? Does anybody have any?
Make another comment about that, perhaps? Is there any way it can be stated that this is a one-time-only understanding of the code in this instance or not?
That, the the answer to that, the shorthand is no. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, should another extension be necessary or applied for.
And Councilman Dick, I would say um you'll know if someone seconds you.
Uh, well, I would move that the council extends the University Place Plan Develop- Development Phase Four Unit, I'm sorry, University Place Plan Phase Four Unit Development PUD, the original PUD from twenty twenty-two, City File PPU D two-two zero-zero-zero-one for a time of eight months, as it is in the public's best interest. And I believe that the developer had a reasonable expectation after working with the city staff for four months after the PUD expired to believe that he was going to get in his plating. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find what else is in there, the plating and
Building.
Building permits.
Building permits to move forward uh with his project. Does that sound all right?
Madam President, um, I didn't get to talk before Counselor Dick made his motion. Point of order, I forgot my Robert's Rules of Order. Um, if there is no second, what happens to?
Dies.
Dies.
Dies. Motion dies for lack of second, Counselor. Is anybody willing to second Mr. Dick's motion?
I'll second it.
And so then um I believe, do we need more deliberation or are we going to have a vote at this point?
I think uh Councilwoman Schreiber, Madam President, I may.
Yes, you may.
You know, we're trying to interpret the code as we bring it back in. Uh, what is the, what is the code saying? And that's our jobs tonight. Not necessarily the emotions, but interpreters of the law here. Be clear.
Thank you for that statement, Councilwoman Spiro. Very insightful. Looks like there's no further deliberation, so this would be a vote, correct?
Madam President?
Yes.
Point of, just a question for clarification um for the motion. Is this eight months from the time of expiration or eight months from today?
Eight months from today.
Yes, thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, good question.
Here goes the roll call vote. Counselor Schreiber?
No.
Counselor Duquette?
No.
Counselor Rule?
No.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
No.
Madam President, motion fails.
So I believe I'm going to defer to Zach if there's any other motions.
Certainly, another motion can be made. Um, I think it would probably be in the negative, um, but I'll leave that to council.
I didn't understand.
I I guess a motion to grant the extension or rather to interpret the ordinance in a way that allows the granting of the extension failed. So the other question on the table is how to interpret the ordinance. And I I'll leave it to council from here, from there.
I guess my question to staff would be, do we need to further interpret if the motion to extend just failed?
I think a clarif- I think a motion clarifying this, the council's interpretation of the ordinance and a decision clarifying council's interpretation of the ordinance would be helpful. So yes, I would, I would request that council consider that.
Okay. So I think I know you were headed with that. So I guess I will make a motion that the council has determined that the PUD has expired pursuant to SCC ten-three dash ten M of our city code. Do I need to make any further statements relative to that?
No, I think that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any deliberation?
I have questions.
Yes, Councilwoman Duquette. We're just determining that the code reads that it expires after two years, I think, if that helps you understand what the motion is for, to clarify that.
I lost my clarifying question.
Okay. Did we get a second? Sorry. We did, okay.
I guess my question is, so now what? And I don't know if this is an appropriate question. How do I find out? You'll tell me. Somebody will tell me.
Well, wait.
What?
Zach?
Should I go ask Zach something?
Well, I don't know. We could, I don't know how we handle that, Zach.
I have a question.
If you need to speak with legal, you can speak with legal outside the council if you're not sure about your question, Zach.
Just right now for a minute?
Correct. If you want to have a quick.
Quick, please.
Okay. Do I need to adjourn for that to happen? Okay, the meeting is temporarily adjourned at seven fifty-six. This meeting is now reconvened at seven fifty-seven.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Duquette, do you have a question at this time? No, you do not. Okay, so we do have a motion on the table.
Madam President, could you reclarify the motion that's on the table?
So the motion would be to establish in our code that the PUD has expired pursuant to SCC ten-three, ten M within that two-year timeframe, I guess, would be an appropriate way to state that.
Yes, I think that's accurate and and that the app, the application for an extension cannot come after the expiration of the.
And the application for extension cannot come after the expiration, it is void. Are we clear on the motion, everyone? Okay, and we did have a second, correct? So this will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
No.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Madam President, motion passes.
Thank you. I believe there is, um, I gotta flip my page over. Oh, I am instructed, I will call a two-minute recess at this time.
Meetings reconvened, Jeremy Grun presiding, eight oh five P M. Uh, for the final item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to convene in executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one. Consider the evaluation dismissal or displan of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent. So I need a motion and a second.
Still moved. Thank you.
Uh, moved by um Council President Rule, second by Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
At this time, I'd ask everyone not participating in the session to please exit the room. The meeting recording will now end. Good night and thank you, everyone who attended this evening.